There it is.
I never ask, I just say.
Hershey Spies.
Yeah.
I don't know what time of day.
I don't want to, but.
Well, we don't have to.
It was Sunday morning about eight o'clock.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the July 22 meeting of the St. Mary's County Planning Commission. Our meeting's being recorded for the public record. Any comments made by anyone present must be recorded as part of the record. Therefore, if you have anything to say, you must come up to one of the microphones provided, or when giving testimony online or telephone, please give us your name followed by your statement. Your comments cannot be recorded and placed in the record unless they are done in this fashion. You are to direct your statements, questions, or responses to the board only, and we will direct them to the appropriate person for an answer. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone testifying or asking questions during our public hearings will be required to take the oath. And if everybody could silence their cell phones at this time. Thank you for your cooperation. On our agenda this evening, after a review and approval of minutes from the July 8 meeting, our public hearing this evening is CSP 23-0265 for the Honda and Kia dealership concept site plan. And they are asking for an approval of a site plan for a 27,242 square foot, one-story car dealership for the Honda, and a 20,296 square foot building for the Kia dealership, including a service area, retail sales or service vehicles, which is permitted use type within the MXM zone and the AE4 overlay zoning district. This time, I'll let the board members introduce themselves.
Kim Summers.
Patty Robrecht.
Joe St. Clair.
Good evening, Lynn Della Hey.
John Brown.
Michael Brown.
And I'm Howard Thompson, Chairman. Also with us this evening, from our county staff, thank you for being here tonight, Mr. St. Clair, too, by the way. County staff, the Director of Department of Land Use and Growth Management, Jessica Andrich. Our planner tonight is Sean Lay Blasco. And our Senior Administrative Coordinator is Betty Nickerson. Also with us is the Deputy County Attorney, Mr. John Sterling Hauser.
Can you turn it up a little? I can't quite hear you.
All right. I'm sure they're here. Thank you, ma'am. Oh, that, no, I want, I want you to tell.
Normally, I'm sitting back there and I warn him about it.
Usually, we're looking for him, but, but you'll, you take that place tonight. John Sterling Hauser, our Deputy County Attorney. Our Deputy Director of Department of Public Works and Transportation, Donnie Mills, from the St. Mary's County Metropolitan Commission, Anna Wells. And our video media producers tonight are Amy Carter and Andrew Beckman. Okay. Did everybody have a chance to review the July 8 minutes? Short minutes. Any corrections? Can I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Can I do it, Ben? I was alting it, but I was here.
Let's not say you did.
Okay.
So moved.
So Ms. Della Hey did the motion, and Ms. Robrecht did the second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. As I say, our first case this evening will be, we started this before CSP 0265. We had a few glitches, and, and we are, we are back online tonight. Mr. Mudd, it's darn good to see you tonight, in the flesh. If we want to go ahead and start, Sean Lay, you can go ahead, and we're gonna, we're gonna start this all over again, just so we got everything good. Okay?
Good evening. The agenda tonight is a concept site plan, CSP 230265 for Honda and Kia dealership. The concept site plan seeks approval for 27,242 square feet, one-story.
Sean Lay, can I interrupt you for just one second? I'm gonna go ahead and swear everybody in that's, that's gonna be doing any testifying, and I apologize for that. I got a little ahead of myself. Anybody that's gonna be making any comments tonight, or the applicant, and anybody with the county, if you'd like to stand at this time, I'll get you, everybody sworn in. Okay, raise your right hand. And do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay. And I'll also ask you, if it comes to public testimony, I'll ask you if you were sworn in at the time. Sorry for the interruption.
The concept site plan seeks approval for 27,242 square feet, one-story Honda dealership, and 20,296 square feet, one-story Kia dealership, including service area. The site is located on 23112, 23116, 23134, 23140, Three Notch Road, California, Maryland. The comprehensive plan area is a growth area, and the land use area is mixed-use medium intensity. The zoning is MXM, medium-intensity mixed-use, and AE4 overlay. Use type 75 is permitted use in the zoning district. It's a retail sales or service for vehicles. Applicable regulations, Section 51 dot 3, Regulations and Standards, Schedule 32 dot 1, Development Standards, Chapter 63, Landscaping and Buffer Yards, Chapter 64, Off-Street Parking and Loading, and Chapter 671, Resource Protection. In order to approve the concept site plan, the Planning Commission shall make the findings that the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable functional plans, may be served by adequate public facilities as required by Section 70 dot 2 dot 2, will promote health, safety, and welfare of the general public, adequately developed recreational and other community amenities are provided in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive zoning ordinance, is consistent with Chapter 62, Design Objectives. The applicant must obtain approvals from Board of Appeals to reduce the 30-feet C-type buffer yard adjacent to parcel 286 on the southwestern boundary. This concludes the staff report and is entered into the record of this public hearing as Exhibit 2. Pat Mudd from Mudd Engineering is here representing the applicant. Is there any question for me?
Does anybody have any questions as staff at this time?
I don't know at what point we'll enter. There is a letter from the public that questions the issue of the adequate public facilities. I don't know if you've read that letter. We kind of slipped by it on that slide before this last one. And then the question was the individual, and I just wonder what the response may be. It says, the, on page 7 of the staff report for the July 8 Planning Commission meeting provided to the public, in the conclusion section, it says, "The proposed development appears to meet the requirements." That conclusion is incorrect, and they put that in bold. "The development fails to meet the adequacy of roads and adequacy of storm drainage requirements. We respectfully contend that the commission should not and cannot accept the erroneous conclusion provided in the staff report." I guess the simple question is, what is your response to that? Because there's an allegation that it's an erroneous statement in that staff report.
Oh, I'm sure the traffic engineer and our engineer will be able to answer that.
Are you a member of staff?
I pay my bills. I can tell you I'm gonna get in the paycheck from anyone else but the commission.
I didn't see you get sworn in if you're testifying on this.
I've never had to serve, well.
Well, he's, he says he's testifying on.
It's not testimony, Mr. Brown. You asked for a response. This can be a response, and it's not factual.
I'm asking of staff.
Here's what I was going to come up and say, is that we can work through everything right now. I think that Mr. and Mrs. Brennan's letter raises questions, namely, over stormwater management, traffic, and satisfaction of the health, safety, and general welfare. We can work through all those right now. We've got Donnie Mills, and we can bring them up right now, or I expect they are going to be dealt with in some detail by the applicant's presentation. So we could hear what they have to say, and then come back and bring up any lingering questions now, or we can try and work through it right this moment. But I think the initial response is that we stand by the staff report. And of course, there's always more to be said, and we can get into the particulars, but that's the response for right now.
I think as we work through the hearing, we'll be able to answer all those questions.
Ask the question after the hearing. I mean, not after, but after the.
After the applicant's presentation, because they're, I think, gonna get into the meat of it, and they can probably answer a lot more of the pointed questions to the best of anyone here.
Yes. Thank you, John.
But the staff would still have to concur.
Okay. Is the applicant ready? Mr. Longmore?
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, Chris Longmore with Dugan McKissick &amp; Longmore LLC here to present to you tonight. We've already presented some of our slides. We were gonna go through them again for the public that was not here last time, and for the benefit of the Planning Commission because of the, the technical problems we had last time. So if we can go to the.
Okay. Thank you.
Our second slide, I think that's one of yours, Sean.
All right.
Yeah, so tonight, just to share who's here, and we're all here in person tonight, so we shouldn't have any technical requirements. Greg Lyons, who was here last time with CMA Properties, Inc., the applicant, will be sharing a little bit about the project, as he did last time. Pat Mudd, the engineer, civil engineer on the project and project engineer, is here to present the site plan. Nick Driven is not here tonight, but Mike Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic Consulting, Inc. is here as the traffic engineer, and he'll be able to address any questions with that. And again, I'm here as legal counsel. Just to highlight again, and, and I don't want to repeat everything we said last time, but we're happy to answer any questions. This is a application for a Honda and Kia dealership. The property is located in the Lexington Park Development District. The property is zoned MXM zoning. It was just rezoned that five years ago. This is a fully allowable use in that zone. That is a fairly intense zone. The traffic has not changed that much in this area since that was rezoned, both from the recommendation of this Planning Commission and approved by the Board of County Commissioners. This applicant has invested in the property, knowing that that is the zoning category with the allowable uses that were adopted in that, those provisions of the zoning ordinance. So we are here to present it. Pat has a, a site plan that he's gonna run through the details on. If we can go to the next slide, Sean Lay. The concept site plan criteria, we have, I know that Sean Lay shared that with you on their slides. Those are the five criteria that we'll need to meet tonight. Mr. Brown, we're looking forward to addressing your question. I think we did read the comments from the neighbor that submitted them since the last hearing. I believe we'll be able to address that. The, the bottom line is that the ordinance does allow mitigation for traffic improvements in the development district in certain instances like this one. So we believe that it is fully consistent with the criteria for the site plan, and that the staff report was correct. It has not been changed by the staff, even in light of that, and I know there are members of the staff here that can elaborate on that, but we believe their conclusion that, based on their thorough review of their applic, of our application, that this does meet this criteria. We believe you'll see that tonight after our presentation. If we can go to the next slide. This is just an overview of the site. We had highlighted this last time. I believe this is in the staff report as well. As you'll see, this is four separate parcels that are being developed with one project, two dealerships, one project. As I know, this Planning Commission is well aware, each of these individual parcels has certain development rights, so there could be four different developments, one on each of these parcels. But this developer, we believe, is putting a use in this area that is not only allowed, but is a very good use for the location instead of there being four separate uses. The Planning Commission can look at the allowable uses in the MXM, again, which this was just rezoned to five years ago. They include restaurants, commercial, retail, all of that. We believe this is a good use for this area, as opposed to some of those other allowable uses. If we go to the next slide. And this is just an aerial photo for the public and for the Planning Commission. Again, it's the same map from the county GIS, but showing the, the aerial photo underneath it, right across from First Colony, again, in the development district. If we go to the next slide. And I'm gonna turn it over to Pat, but before Pat, you speak, Greg, if you want to just kind of introduce the project as you did last time, then Pat can get into the details of the concept plan.
That'd be great. Thanks, Chris, and thank you for having us back again. I think we're all present and, and ready to get going. Just to, my name is Greg Lyons, and I'm with Carter Myers Automotive. I'm the Director of Real Estate. Oh, boy, microphone. You hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just a little bit about Carter Myers Automotive, or, or CMA. It's a family-owned and, a family and employee-owned company that turns 100 years old this year. Liza Borchus is our President and CEO, and she's a fourth-generation auto dealer, and we are headquartered in Charlottesville, Virginia. The company started as a hardware star in 1902 and began selling Fords in 1924. Fast forward 100 years, CMA has 24 dealerships in three states, Virginia, North Carolina, and West Virginia. Lexington Park will be our 25th dealership, and the first in Maryland, that we hope to be many in Maryland. A few things about CMA that makes us just a little bit different. We established an, an employee stock ownership program in 1979 to be able to retain great employees, and it was the first of its kind in the auto industry. So now, our associates own 26% of the company, and it has been an absolute game changer when it becomes time for retirement with the ESOP. Each dealership directly, oh, each dealership directly owns its own local philanthropic efforts that typically include an annual bike drive, toy, and food drives, as well as adopting a local nonprofit organization. Each one of our dealerships does that locally. CMA does keep an eye on sustainability. We have five dealerships that have solar panels, and we have a sixth dealership, our Chevy Toyota in Martinsburg, that are installing solar panels this month, just in an effort to reduce our energy consumption. We feel like that's a really good investment that we're trying to make at each of our dealerships. And then, I mentioned this last time on a personal note, I've been with the company, CMA, for two and a half years as the Director of Real Estate. I always heard it was a really good company to work for and be a part of, but the third generation, Carter Myers III, personally drove me around to every single dealership at the time, which I think was about 22, and showed me, he had so much pride in each of the dealerships, but he knew all of the general managers, all the technicians, all the salespeople, basically by name. And it just really showed me how excited he was to be a part of CMA, that I knew I was in the right place because of the people that CMA has in place. Lastly, a similar-sized Honda in Winchester, Virginia employs 77 full-time employees and 12 part-time employees, and will have a similar-sized dealership here. We hope to be a part of the St. Mary's County community for many years to come, and I thank you for having us tonight.
Certainly, Greg will be here for any questions you have, generally about the business or the operations and any other questions. And I, I think with that, Pat, if you want to, if there's no questions for Mr. Lyons, Mr. Mudd can jump in and start running through the site plan. I'd be available for questions.
Well, good evening. I'm Pat Mudd, Mudd Engineering. Nice to be here in person. Nice to see y'all. Just, I want to point out a few highlights of the site plan. Right now, there's several existing driveways on 235 for these various parcels. I believe there's four right now. At one point, there was eight. Our plan eliminates all of those driveways, and we end up with two large commercial entrances. These commercial entrances are designed to be truck-friendly, tractor-trailer-friendly. They're similar in size and design for like the Wawa's across the street, or the Century 21 building. They're similar to that look. I, I saw a comment about tractor-trailer trucks stopping on 235. That's not the, the plan. The, we have a software program that demonstrates that the truck turning movements can all be accomplished on-site. The truck unloading of cars is gonna be to the rear of the site, so there won't be any disruption of traffic when cars are being unloaded onto the site. We are also bringing public water and sewer across the frontage of the site. The water is coming from Route 4 to the west. It'll go all across the properties between us and Route 4, all the way down across our frontage and, and into the frontage of the Guy property next door. The public sewer will be across our entire frontage, and then across several parcels to an existing manhole to the east of our site, where it'll connect into the public system that goes under 235. Part of the, the water and sewer issues are, we cannot put the water and sewer in the state right away. It has to go on our land, on private property. So we've obtained easements from the, some of the adjoining property owners to do that, 20-foot-wide easement per the Metropolitan Commission's standards. And part of their standards are that trees and shrubs are not allowed to be planted in that, in that easement. So our, our parking lot sits approximately 34 to 40 feet from the curb line of, of 235. It's a, quite a distance. There's also a grade change between 235 at our site. For most of the area, our parking lot will be at a higher elevation than the road. There's a couple areas that might be a little lower, but for the most part, with the grade change, it'll be, you know, several feet in difference between the road and our site. Can we go to the next slide, please? This shows the landscaping that we're proposing. You see that in the rear of the, of the site, we're gonna adhere to a 30-foot buffer with a fence. It's quite an intense planting scheme, and all the adjoining property that is zoned RNC will have this buffer. Along the eastern property line with the Guy property, we're proposing a six-foot fence, wood, wood fence, that will run right down the property line. And we are also working with Mr. Guy to have his property accessed through our entrance so that he will have public access from 235 to the rear of his building. Next slide, please. This shows the detail of the water and sewer extensions. You can see that the top part is the water line coming from Route 4 across our site, and the lower is the sewer line coming from our site down the road to the existing manhole. Next slide, please. This is the parking schematic. It shows the different types of parking that's gonna be on the site. We have customer parking, we have new vehicle parking, we have used vehicle parking, we have service vehicle parking, and all of which, excuse me, all of which add up to the total number of parking spaces on the plan. We have, we meet the required number of spaces for this use, and the remaining spaces shown on this plan will be used for either service vehicles, new cars, or used cars. Next slide. This is the drainage area map for the existing conditions. There are three drainage areas that this property encompasses. There's a small drainage area to the upper left, there's a slightly larger one to the upper right, and the bulk of the site drains to 235 into the state highway system, across 235 and into the First Colony project. Next slide, please. This is a, a slide showing the proposed drainage area maps, and what I want to point out is, under the stormwater management requirements from the state, we're, we're required to maintain drainage boundaries as best we can between the existing conditions and proposed conditions. So we also will have three different drainage areas, a small one to the, to the upper left, a slightly larger one to the upper right, and a majority of the site draining towards 235. And just to give you an idea, the, the smallest drainage area, it's currently about a half an acre, and we'll have about seven tenths of an acre going that way. The next one was existing, is almost five acres, and we're cutting that down to about four acres. And the other, the largest drainage area is over eight acres, and we'll have at least that much going in that direction. As part of the stormwater management plan, we intend to have a filter system that will filter the water through a bio system that removes all the pollutants, and then a storage system that will provide storage capacity. Now, what we're doing is, the filtering system meets the state criteria for environmental site design to the maximum extent practicable. We're also gonna do quantity control, and we're gonna have underground storage that is gonna hold the 10-year event in an underground compartment and release it at the rate of the current existing drainage amount that goes out of those three different discharge points. In addition to that, in addition to having all this storage and having all this ESD requirements, Public Works is gonna require us to do downstream analysis to ensure that we're not impacting the downstream neighbors, the downstream roadways, downstream drainage systems. So all of those things are gonna be part of the final site plan, and we will be adhering to all those things. I think that's all I have to highlight. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any of the board members have any questions, and Mr. Mudd? I got a couple. Stormwater management. I think the system that you were talking about has been used in a couple other shopping centers, Harris Teeter and Oak Crest, things like that.
Yes.
Go over that again, just so I can hear it again, and then people in the audience can hear it again. You're gonna hold all that water on-site when it's really bad, like you said, a 10-year event? Explain that to me again, if you would.
Well, there's, in the design of a stormwater management system, there are several different levels of rainfall that you have to control. The, the ESD, the environmental site design amount, is equivalent, more or less, to a one-year storm, which means about two inches of rainfall in a 24-hour period. A 10-year event is a 5.4-inch rainfall in a 24-hour event. So there's a huge difference between those two. And for the ESD, the environmental site design, we are required to filter it through a bio system that cleans, is supposed to cleanse the water before it's released. So we will be installing some concrete chambers that have biomaterial in them and run the water through these bio systems, and then putting them in a underground storage system to be released at the rate that a 10-year storm, or a two-year storm, or a one-year storm would be released into the other drainage systems. For instance, if we have a low amount of rain, like, for instance, a one-year storm, the release from this system would be the equivalent of what is going down that ravine today, that, that system today. If we have a 10-year storm, it would be the same thing. The amount of water released at any one time would be the same as if it were a 10-year storm in the conditions that the land is today. Does that help?
You were talking about, let's see, let's just go over some of the things that you did, if you don't mind asking questions. The car loading protocol for on the lot. You say that they're gonna be able to do that all interior, all inside the lot.
Yes, sir.
As far as delivery of, or, or how the trucks get there, are they going to, I'll say, use, and, I don't know the word I want, they're gonna have to go a little bit out of their way in order to get back up, traveling north on 235 to get into that lot? I mean, are they gonna try to? I know right there at the intersection right next to them, not the 4 and 235, but the other intersection from the shopping center is. kind of tight. They're not going to be using, going, the trucks won't be going through the neighborhood?
No, no, sir. What I anticipate would be, they would be, if they're coming from the Leonardtown area, they would turn at FDR Boulevard, come down to First Colony Boulevard, turn up to 235 and enter 235 with that signal. And then there's a right-in at the site. The first entrance would be where the trucks would come in. And then there's a path that'll be laid out with more thicker asphalt for the truck traffic to go in and then unloading space in the back row behind the buildings. And then the truck would come out and exit the site at the Westerly exit. If they're coming, and if they're coming down from Route 4, they'd do the same route. If they're coming down 235, they would make the turn on Route 4, go to First Colony or FDR and then First Colony, the same circuit.
I noticed also when you were speaking about the interparcel connectors. You got, can't hear me in the back? Okay, how about now? Okay, just wave if, I'll know what you're doing. And if I don't see it, Patty will notice, somebody will notice. Interparcel connectors, I know on Mr. Guy's side, you're taking care of that. Now, you have two pieces of property. I keep wanting to call it north, I guess it's west. I mean, go north on 235 is what you say. Let's say towards Route 4 that are there. Would y'all consider, I'll say, I know you've got lines on the lot, you know, for the cars and stuff and you could do that still, but would you consider interparcel connectors for those two lots? For future use, say they develop that for whatever. I know Mr. Feith has a piece of property in the other one that, I forgot the name of the LLC that has that, but not necessarily a developed interparcel connector, but a on paper so that in the future, because they're not going to be able to have any entrances. Y'all are probably going to be the last entrance off of 235 that can get into that little corner of that property. Would y'all be, and it isn't a big property, so it's not going to be like it's a store or anything like that. I mean, unless it surprises me or something like that. But would y'all be, would that be something you could work on to, if we were to put a condition? I'm not saying I'm going to, but I'm going to talk about it before it's all over with to take care of those neighbors on the other side.
Yeah, you know, we've spoken with neighbors on both sides and, you know, we'd love to figure something out. Yeah.
I just want to make sure they get taken care of. And car unload, would you be amenable to a condition that when people go out and take a test drive in your car? Let me ask you a question. Do you have an employee go, I went to buy, I'm not, I don't buy a lot of cars. Last one I did buy, employee went with me. I didn't know if he didn't trust me or afraid I was going to go off with it. They kept my license and he came with me. So for whatever reason, but I wouldn't want anybody, I wouldn't want that neighborhood back there used as a test drive lane. One, it's, I stayed back there a lot and that road hadn't gotten any bigger since I was a young man, so it's not really a, it's not a big road, not a wide road back in there. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see it used, one, for test drives and I wouldn't want to see it used for, in your maintenance department. You know, I know they have to go out for a couple mile drive after they do a service repair or anything like that, see if the vehicle's working. Would you be all right with a condition to keep them from going through that neighborhood?
Yeah, that would be no problem. Usually people want to test the accelerator. People going into the neighborhood.
At 235?
No one likes to parallel park on a good day, certainly not during a test drive. So if there's a condition not to go into the neighborhood, that'd be.
And that'd be something that you would explain to folks before they took a test drive that look, don't want you to go back there type of thing?
Absolutely.
Okay. You're saying it's going to be about eighty-nine employees?
At our Winchester location in Virginia, seventy-seven full-time, yeah. Twelve part-time.
So it's going to be, you say, about the same?
Similar-sized dealership, so we anticipate about the same.
Okay. The buffer out front. Everybody's like going, arrgh. All the other dealerships and all the other stores and commercial buildings and such going down 235 have some sort of a buffer, be it if it's not a fence, it's just a grass buffer. I'd hate for somebody, if you were to park your car, I notice on the lines right now that you're going to have cars pretty close to 235, which is good. You want people to see them, but let's just say Howard Thompson's riding down there on his bicycle down the sidewalk, which I'm not supposed to do, and I just happened to veer off and strike about three of your more expensive cars that you got sitting out front. Wouldn't it be better to have just some sort of a grass buffer out front? I know you can't have trees, I heard you, can't have bushes, but you didn't say anything about grass, Mr. Mudd, so.
You can absolutely have grass.
I'm just, would that be something you could work with? Put a little strip of grass beside the sidewalk, you know, it's just.
There would probably be about twenty-five feet of grass between the sidewalk and the
That's what I want to hear. I mean, in Howard's world, I'd like to have bushes and such out there just so people can't see those nice new cars, but they're going to see them anyway. I mean, if they want to look, they're going to look. So that's, that's the way it is. But I just wanted to see, make sure you're going to have some sort of turf out front, not bushes, not trees. Okay?
I don't speak for Greg, but I believe there's no intent to park cars between the curb line of the parking lot and the sidewalk on 235.
Okay. Just want to make sure they're off the highway a bit.
I only laugh, Chairman, because there are other dealers that have said that and they violated that condition. I just want to, that's the only reason I'm chuckling.
Okay.
We hope yet you don't.
I have a question, I have one question. There's two lanes, two entry lanes coming in and two out. Would there be a barrier or curb in the middle so people won't continue to go down that turn lane?
Yes, there's a triangular-shaped island between the right in and the right out and it'll be an eighty-inch curb, so you won't want to hit that with your car.
Good. Okay.
I need clarification because I kind of asked that question last time. Is it, does it protrude out into the turn right lane or are you putting an additional lane, deceleration and acceleration lane?
Well, we're not adding a new deceleration lane, but the curb itself on the island sits back from the edge of the existing pavement by at least three feet. So that if you're driving down the access road, the access lane, you're not going to be in danger of hitting that curb.
Okay. Mr. Mudd, Joe St. Clair. The loading and unloading of new vehicles coming and going, is there a timeframe in which these trucks, so that they won't be unloading, making noise at night in the neighborhood when they're coming in?
Typically, the new car deliveries, car deliveries are done during the day.
Is that something that you can actually state for the general public that will be taken care of during the daytime?
Are the cars normally unloaded while y'all are open? You know, so that they can park them in a certain spot and, you know, make sure that everything is where it's supposed to be?
Typically, they are delivered during the day, transfer keys, all those sort of things.
So it takes place during the day?
It takes place during the day.
Yeah, I'm just trying to give consideration to the neighbors behind you that they won't come in at midnight and you hear all these chains and everything going on.
Right.
Any other questions?
I have one more question.
Good.
How do you abandon septic tanks and wells on a property? It says before, how do you do that?
Well, the Health Department has a criteria for how that has to be done and there will be a contractor that will be certified by the Health Department to do that. And the Health Department will do the inspection and then give a certification that they have been properly disconnected and no longer in service.
Have we addressed the mitigation that I guess is associated with the APF?
You mean for the traffic mitigation? We have Mr. Lenhart here that can speak a little bit about traffic and he'd probably be the best. Certainly, we can answer any other questions, maybe after he speaks.
Any other questions, Mr. Mudd?
Bring them up if you're ready.
Well, we can bring you back if we need something. Mr. Lenhart, you want to come up?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Okay. Make sure you're speaking to the microphone for us.
So we conducted a traffic impact study that was scoped with staff and with State Highway Administration. That study was completed. It was reviewed by both the state and your staff. And we do have an approval from State Highway and approval from your staff. Proposing mitigation at Route 4 and 235. As you all know, the intersection fails. It has failed for quite some time. The intersection is built out. There's really not much that could be done to the intersection. There's nothing that could be done that is uneasy. And so we're proposing mitigation, payment of a pro-rata. Basically, we looked at this site's impact to the intersection and then based upon that impact, add a pro-rata percentage to the cost estimate. And that's how we came up with the mitigation. And I'll just be brief. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer questions.
Do you want to explain the mitigation, how you came up with the number?
Certainly. So the intersection of Route 235 and FDR Boulevard, as you know, is currently a right-in and a right-out. If you are coming, we'll call it south on 235, you can make a right turn onto FDR Boulevard, but you cannot make, return left turn from FDR Boulevard onto 235 northbound. And so for decades now, FDR has been, in the planning and construction process, much of it has been built and completed. But the fact that you cannot make a left turn from FDR Boulevard onto 235 really makes it difficult to get the benefit of having that parallel road network because you can't use it to get up there and go north on 235. So you're kind of forced to stay on Route 4 and use the 4 and 235 intersection. The implementation of that signal and allowing that left turn will allow a sufficient amount of trips to mitigate on that alternate route, alternative route, 4 and 235. They would divert away from that onto FDR. And in fact, I would just, allow me to read. The St. Mary's County priority letter to the State Highway Administration has a number of items that they were proposing for major and minor construction projects. The number-one issue under the planning section of that letter, and this is the 2024 letter to State Highway, recommends a signalized full-movement intersection at Maryland 235 and FDR Boulevard, and I'm quoting from this county's letter, "which would positively affect the Maryland 235 and Maryland 4 intersection level of service and create safer junction for both pedestrian and vehicular traffic. This intersection improvement will give the northbound traffic along FDR Boulevard and eastbound traffic along Maryland 4. If you're coming out of Leonardtown and you want to go north on 235, currently you have to go up to 4 and 235. It would give those vehicles an additional option and help mitigate the number of vehicles at the Maryland 4 and 235 intersection while also better serving the residents and business developments along this section of FDR Boulevard." So.
Mike, what were you reading from again, just so we have that for the record?
That is the March 12, 2024, letter from the St. Mary's County Commissioners to the Secretary of Transportation at Maryland DOT, and it is the FY 2025 Transportation Program Priorities. And again, that intersection is the number-one recommended priority under the planning section. Thank you for.
I have a comment about that. You're saying that people want to come out of FDR and make a left turn to go north on 235? Is that what the issue is?
If you are, if you're down on FDR Boulevard anywhere to the east of Route 4, today, if you want to go north on 235, you have to go through the intersection of 4 at 235. There's no way around it. You either go up 235 or you come up FDR Boulevard to 4 and then you go north on 4 and make a left at 4 and 235. And so there's no alternate for that movement. Installation of this traffic signal would allow any local or regional traffic the ability to avoid 4 and 235 by using the new traffic signal.
You'll be able to come out FDR where the apartments are? You know, on the edge of Wildwood and between the shopping center with Harris Teeter and the apartments where FDR is there, there'll be a full-service light, so cars will be able to make a left and avoid this intersection altogether. So it'll be a way to divert trips from the intersection that we're talking about, away from the intersection going further up 235 in that direction where it's not, you can't make that movement right now because it's right out. I believe.
That's correct. The dealership is, effect will affect this intersection you're talking about?
So I think, and Mike, you can correct me, that the intersection that we need to discuss is Route 235 and Route 4.
That's correct.
Adding this traffic light will take trips out of that intersection to make it better. That, I believe, is what Mr. Lenhart is saying.
That's correct.
And that is what the county commissioners said in their March that Mr. Lenhart just read. That's why they requested that light from the state and made it a priority. So it's not just Mr. Lenhart that feels that way. It's written right in that letter. What he read is not his words. It's a letter from the county commissioners to the state. Is that?
That's correct.
Did I state that correctly?
Well, I'm certainly not against the idea. What will be the impact, or has anybody even thought about, with people now coming out of that shopping center across FDR, having to turn left back across it? You understand what I'm saying? You're increasing the traffic flow in that short distance. So now you're going to have the problems of the apartments and then the shopping center being able to exit across there. And I didn't know if anybody's ever looked at that.
We did not look at that in terms of this study, but I can say that the FDR Boulevard parallel route and an alternate route to 235 has been on the book for many decades. And it's finally come to a place where it's functioning well. It's taken traffic off the main line, but it's not taken traffic out of 4 and 235 yet because of this issue.
Well, I'm all for it. There's many a time I've had to take the right to take the left.
Right.
Well, if you did that, the light would still give you a gap, I'll say. If you're on FDR Boulevard and you're heading to go north on 235, you'll still have that gap in the traffic.
Absolutely.
Harris Teeter still has their turn lane, so they'll be able to, you know, get that. Of course, people coming out, I'll say, out of the back of Harris Teeter will have gaps caused by, met by the light that'll be able to get them to turn left. And of course, right, they can, they can go ahead and do their thing.
Right.
What's the estimated completion time of that light compared to the?
Lynn, pull the microphone up there.
What's the estimated completion time of the light compared to the building of the new dealership?
I do not have a completion time for the signal. We are simply proposing our, our toward funding of the construction of the signal. But as far as timing, I don't have a timing on when that would be completed.
Really, it's up to. Mr. Mills is here. Can you give us any input on? Can you give us any input on that as to when that might take place, give or take?
You mean, construction? So, no, I don't have an answer on that. But we were scheduled, we have a quarterly meeting with the state, and we go over these kinds of things. So, that would have been something on the agenda. It was on the agenda, but unfortunately, weren't able to have that meeting. It was scheduled Wednesday, and I might have been able to give you something, but that meeting was canceled, so.
But, okay. Can that information be sent to us when you do have that? Even though if we were to go through this tonight, just something we can put in our file? I'm sure you're going to get in touch with Land Use, you know, about it and all. But is that something you can put? And I mean, it'll probably be published, I'll say, in any type of the news agencies around here to have a timeframe when that'll go.
Yeah, we can circulate that.
Just, you know, we approve a lot of projects, and sometimes it takes years. What is, what is, let's just say, on a good day, this gets approved. What's the timeframe that they, y'all are thinking about to break ground and to start on this?
You're talking about the building itself? We are ready to break ground as soon as we have a building permit. Everything's approved, and it's going to be about a 11 to 12 month building time.
When you say 11 to 12 month building time, just so the record's clear, is that the construction time?
That's the construction period.
And then, there's what, a period? Who from Land Use can give me an answer on that? Say they start, let's just, let's just say that it gets approved. How long does it take to go through the process for all the permits and such? I'm just trying to hope that Mr. Mills can get his intersection built at the same time y'all are doing permits and all that good stuff.
Jessica Andritz, the Director of Land Use and Growth Management. I think our standpoint is usually 12 to 18, could be as long as 24 months. Depends on the quality of the submission and issues that might arise.
Yes, ma'am. Appreciate it.
And Director, is that until building permits, like, to get to the?
Jessica, before you go, got a question from a board member.
I'm not quite sure if you're the right person to ask this question of, but when looking at the staff report, last time, it showed that the estimate of the cost of the new traffic light was $500,000. You all are proposing $18,500 a portion of that. Where does the rest of that money come from? And are we guaranteed to get that money to have that light? I am actually not in the best position to answer, but I think that's approaching.
So, that is complicated. But there's a number of different ways. I mean, it could be that developers prefer to keep putting money towards this intersection improvement. It also could be county funded, or a portion could be county funded. And then, there's certain pieces of it that could be state funded. Obviously, it's a state road that we're impacting, that we'd be putting the signaling on. So, the state's all involved with the permitting and all of that anyway. So, there are cost sharing projects that could, this may get some traction to get there. Being that it's in the SHA priority letter, that could be a whole nother way to fund that from the state. But, you know, a lot of the state funding, you know, did get cut. So, I don't know if that has to do with the bridge or all of that, but, you know.
So, the reality of it is, is we cannot be 100% sure that it's something that's going to happen in the immediate future.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
While you're still there, but when these gentlemen dedicate that money, it is basically fenced for that project, correct? In other words, the state or you all don't have a possibility of spending it elsewhere.
So, I'm going to say yes, that should be how it works.
Okay, I just kind of want to assure these gentlemen, okay?
I've not gotten into that on, you know, when you're talking about spending the money, but it does go into that account for road mitigation.
Okay. I just want to kind of assure these people that they're putting up the money, but you don't want to have anybody paying a sleight of hand.
Yes.
So, Mr. Mills says that's how it should work. That's how it is, does work. That's how it has to work. If you were, again, big ifs here, and we're looking forward here, nothing's.
Remember, John, I work for the federal government. I know how to play games.
I wish it were that easy to move money around, trust me. But, look, were a condition made that as a condition of approval tonight, that mitigation were required, that would be earmarked for this specific mitigation? You couldn't just play the shell game and then afterwards decide that something else makes more sense, independent of coming back to you all, and then allocating that money elsewhere. Ms. Summers, to your earlier question too, something to keep in mind, one of the answers you had was guarantees, which may be reading between the lines, is what guarantees that if you assess the mitigation at this UNO, that the use wouldn't come online until the mitigation is actually there? I might draw some dispute from the development on this one. It might be something to hash out, but I think you're within your rights to, as a condition, pass that a UNO be concurrent with any improvements already being built out and developed and not having to wait for the remaining 480-odd thousand dollars to show up before this could all be done. I get that puts us in a little bit of a jam because the question is out there, where does the remaining money come from? But that just might have to be something that's figured out down the line, if it is at all, to get a UNO in time. That might just be the reality of the situation out here.
Anybody have any questions to John before he tries to escape?
Are you saying they should accelerate, or it could be a condition to accelerate that light? Or are you just saying it's a condition that they have to be concurrent?
No, it would be a condition that it be concurrent, is what I think. Because you all don't, planning commission can't accelerate any projects. That money, right, it doesn't come from this day.
Everybody understands.
Right. You, most you can do in your power tonight is just to pass a condition that it be concurrent with issuance of a UNO down the line.
Anybody have any questions to Mr. Mills before he sits down? We might be calling you back, Donnie, thank you. You have anything else, Mr. Lenhart?
I'm available if you have any other questions.
Anybody else have anything? You have anything else?
We reserve the right to address any public comments, of course, and answer any questions they have, but that was what we had prepared for the soon.
Nothing else? Okay. Then I am going to open a public testimony at this time. I'll ask everybody, I have a sign-in sheet, and I will ask ones on the sheet first to come up, ask for your name and address. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And then, after that, I will see if there's anybody else in the audience that has anything they want to say. When you do come up, I will ask your name and I'll ask if I sworn you in, because there was quite a few people out there. First person that wants to speak on my list is Jay Armsworthy. Wherever you're most comfortable.
I like to sit down. Good evening. I want to first thank you all for allowing us as a.
I did swear you in, right?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you, Jay.
Thank you all for allowing us the time to come here to represent our community, Woodland Acres. My name's Jay Armsworthy. I have lived in the Woodland Acres for 25 years, and we have several residents that are visiting here this evening to state their case. We're going to try to, I'm going to try to represent everybody if I can. Woodland Acres is a small community. We've been there for, it's ever since the early '70s, I believe, the community has been there. And we have our concerns about the new dealership that's coming. I know one of the biggest concerns is taking a right on 235, easy right on Route 4, easy right on Oak Drive, old pine court back to 235, great little route for a test drive. But as the community, we don't want that. We've got a lot of families that have children, where there's even some special needs kids and adults that live in the neighborhood. And that is, and we already have a business that's in our community that bring extra traffic and speeding through our neighborhood. And we'd like to ask some questions about that. And a lot of things that we did want to touch on, you all have already asked and spoke. So, I'll try to go through some of the other things. The lights and the noise, thank you, we were concerned about that. And since we got our new one-way entrance in, a lot of folks in the community, we are a close-knit family of community. We didn't used to lock our doors or our cars. We were comfortable with leaving our houses unlocked sometimes. But now, since the new entrance, we have a lot of people cutting through our community. And I've actually witnessed cars coming, going out of the one-way entrance onto Oak Drive to bypass an accident on 235 to get on Route 4. We've had that several times that has taken place. And another thing, the storm, storm water management. We already have homes that have flooding issues in our community as it is. And we do have some pictures that even prove. Didn't expect that.
Thank you.
Mr. Howser? Hold on a second, Jay. Mr. Howser, are we allowed to get these in this fashion?
Yes, you're allowed to accept them. If you've got spare copies, man, applicants got a right to see them. So, at one point, I need a copy given to Mr. Longmore to show to his clients. And then, at the end of the day, make sure Sean Lee gets a copy as well so we can make it part of the records. Someone surrendering their copy to me, it looks like?
You got a couple?
Okay.
Picture's worth a thousand words.
There's two different, hold on, John, give me one back. The different picture.
Oh, different picture.
Okay, gotcha.
It's back, front, and back.
I knew they were, they were pictures, but I didn't think they were going to get.
Same picture on the front and the back.
No, no, it's not. But look at that, it's different.
Yeah, there's already several drainage pipes running through there with a lot of water. There's a pond that's behind our community too. And I'm sure that's where they're talking about a lot of the water drain off, runoff is going to come through our community. As a community to go right to that pond, I'm sure. Some questions that I have for these folks is how are they going to enforce the test drive loop? I mean, a salesman, he's interested in selling the car. He's not worried about a community, hey, let's go here. How are they going to enforce that? And will they have their own right turn lane? There's already businesses on 235 between Shady Mall and Route 4. They don't have a right turn lane, and I've seen several accidents that have happened between Shady Mall and Route 4. Just one sweet frog. You know, people make a last minute right turn, and, you know, I've seen accidents happen that way by not having a right turn lane.
Your time's almost up, Mr. Armsworthy. Your time's almost up.
Oh, okay. A couple other things was the privacy trees. Is there going to be a privacy fence behind those buffer of trees? Because that will allow trespassers cutting through the community. And will the business have a future access to the future Able House Drive that's going to run through there and which should be behind our community? And one last thing is, I thought 235 northbound was supposed to be office, business offices, banks, and restaurants. No retail. That was important. Thank you again for.
Hold on one second. Does anybody have any questions to Mr. Armsworthy? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
I have a question mark, J.D. Blackwell? Okay. The next one I have with a yes is Colleen Lane? Did I get a chance to swear you in, ma'am?
Is that working?
Yes, ma'am. Just be close to it, okay?
My name's Colleen Lane. I live at 23242 Oak Drive in California. The first question that I'd like to ask to this gentleman back here is he said they want to stay on FDR Boulevard and put another light on 235. I don't know how familiar you guys are, Worth, but there's a light at 24 and 235. There's one at the Wildwood. He's talking about coming out, not even a quarter of a mile, to put another light, but in order to stay on FDR Boulevard to get to that light, you have to cut through a condo community. There's an apartment and condo community that is right there, and that's their exit, that they have to turn south on 235. So, now, you're talking about taking traffic up and through that community just to be able to turn northbound on 235. So, once again, you're affecting another community. Last, last three weeks ago when we were here, somebody said something about a ravine in our neighborhood to run water off. I didn't get to take pictures on Friday, and I was running a little late for work. It started to sprinkle, as it always, ha-ha seems to do. In behind where they're talking, there are what I call three retention ponds. So, if you're behind Longhorn, there's a retention pond that stays full. That thing never empties. Then it has an overflow that goes down into another retention pond that has the skimmer and the thing in it. So, then it flows to the next retention pond. Then it goes across the street, it goes under the street. Then it goes to a ditch, which goes down the road into those two ditches that you saw covered in water. That storm, we got four inches of rain in two days, and that's what that neighborhood looked like. That gentleman standing in that picture is six feet, two inches tall. All that stuff you see on top of that water is pine bark that came off of a playground that was probably 100 feet away from where he was standing. That entire area, when they put the new road in so that we had access to 235, when they put that new road in, the problem was the drainage was never sufficient. It comes over the top of that hill, and it all goes down. The one culvert that they did put in there does not manage the water. It just does not manage. If we get any amount of rain at all, the culvert overflowing, the water goes across the street, and then it goes down into, unfortunately, Scott's Yard because he has the lowest yard. For the first time in all the years they've lived there, they've lived there over 30 years, their basement flooded after that new road went in. Thank you for your time.
Hold on, is there any questions?
I have a question. Can I ask you? This ditch, this ditch you're talking about, is this on the side of the road where the new car wash is?
Let me see if I can explain this. The car wash is here, the road's here. The road comes down, it turns, it goes up a hill, and then goes down. Now, here is a pretty deep ditch, but none of the water goes there. The water goes under the road into a system that goes where that culvert's supposed to be. It's supposed to go under the roads to the culvert, and then whatever comes over the hill off the roads goes into that culvert. So, that's where it's all going. Did I answer your question? Okay. Yeah, but we are definitely being flooded a lot lately. We have two neighbors that are constantly being flooded, and they are the low ones, unfortunately. So, anybody else?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
John Osborne? Did I get a chance to swear you in, sir?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you.
You hear me?
Yes.
All right.
You can lift, you can, either just take the microphone out and hold it up.
I'm John Osborne, hello. I am with Carter Myers Automotive. My family and I, which are sitting in the back corner, moved out here in August. One of the requirements to work with Carter Myers Automotive is that you have to live in the community that you serve. And so, we made that commitment last August to come out here and be part of it. Just want to say hello. I also wanted to address just a couple of things regarding the test drive, the vehicles being dropped off and so forth, because I've run dealerships, been in the automotive since 1990. Because I've run dealerships, I've been in the automotive since 1997. And so Greg's already mentioned a few things, but ESOP is one of the reasons why I am with Carter Myers Automotive. Many times businesses, the income goes directly to the top, and a lot of the employees don't get to participate in that growth and that profit. And we have an employee that's retiring with over a million dollars from this ESOP. And stories like that is why we are growing well and keeping our employees. And it's a big part of why I'm with Carter Myers, because I want my kids to have that opportunity too, whether they're an executive in a company or not. We also believe in supporting our community. Since August, we've been, we've started going to a local church, developing small groups to help support other adoptive and foster care families. You could probably tell, my kids are not biological. So adoptive and foster support is really important to my wife and I, and we're hopeful that we can continue to grow that in this area. You guys had a couple of questions on the test drive routes. I believe that this is kind of like a family discussion. I will have an employee that breaks the rule. I, I know, it's gonna happen. And you know, right? I can say it won't happen.
Can you, can you address the board?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Can you address the board?
Absolutely. It will likely happen. My email address, we have a Google phone number even before the project begins, that goes to my cell phone number. The neighbors are welcome to have both of those if there is a concern. It can be, my direct line will be on there and so will my email address. Part of these things that can be minimized is through orientation, our employees, our technicians, really it's gonna be sales and technicians are probably the two positions that will most likely be the ones that would be violating this. So an orientation, every employee, it's not taking over an organization, we'll be hiring every one of them from day one. And so orientation, it'll be very clear, and so I'll be involved with that. So I would just ask if there is a concern that I am communicated with, and then I will address that. It's really important for us to partner with our neighbors. We want it to be a good situation for everybody. The second question, or one of the other questions, was about the delivery trucks that bring the vehicles to us. The drivers are required to get a delivery receipt. To do that, service, parts, or sales has to be open. Our normal business, business hours are 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. You have to have, they have to have a delivery receipt. We have to walk around a car to ensure that there's no damage to the vehicle before that vehicle can be left. Otherwise, the damage is on the dealership, so they want to make sure they get a delivery receipt.
Time's almost up, Mr. Longmore.
Okay, no problem. Last thing I have is the parking out front. I come from a very, really transparent thing. If you have to use balloons and car fax things out front, cars propped up and everything like that, that's just, I, I don't, it's not any part of any business I've ever done. We're gonna sell it, sell cars by being transparent and building a lot of value in what we do. There will not be cars on our front grass. So I thank you very much for your time, and we're excited to represent our community.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Osborne? It's a good start. Thank you, sir. Mr. Aldridge, I think that's you that, that scratched on here.
I'm gonna say if it's okay.
No, no problem, no problem. And I did have a chance to swear you in. Thank you.
Louis Aldridge III. I submitted written comments. I don't know if the board got them, they were pretty detailed. The one thing I would like to share.
Can you bring your mic over to you?
Yeah, sure. One thing I would like to share is I've worked with Carter Myers Automotive Group from his two years on this project. So I've got to know them pretty well, and ironically, my family had a Ford dealership from 61 to 2007. My uncles and my grandfather and my father knew the Carter Myers family personally. So it's kind of full circle that when they called to buy the property, to put a dealership in, we had a relationship, we knew they were good people, they were self-made, like my family, started with nothing, worked their way up. Email-owned, employee-owned, industry-leading. But they're good people, they'll be a good addition to the community. That's the most important thing I wanted to say. In working with Carter Myers in this project, I've tried to sell real estate on that stretch of land from Shady Mile to Route 4 for 20 years. So there's nine homes between First Colony Boulevard and Route 4. Prior to Carter Myers buying them, the average age of ownership of those homes was 39 years. So think about it, you've got the best visibility, best traffic for 39 years, most of those homes couldn't sell. They've been effectively condemned. So I worked with Carter Myers, I was very transparent with them. I said, hey, look, there's traffic, it's a failing intersection, all these things. They took the, they were willing to work with me to get the contract done, to do the deal, to buy not only our properties, but two other properties. They're gonna work with the community, they're gonna do everything, make it right, I believe, based on my things with them. Something that's overshadowed in this deal is all the driveways, all the traffic. Carter Myers is willing, ready, and able to close. They're gonna put in big right in and right outs, which are just the other car dealership, get in and out quicker, get them turned the right direction, merge with traffic. I believe, because I've lived in those properties, that's going to be public safety. I think it's gonna prevent accidents. I think it's going to allow people to turn in and turn out at a, I hate to use the word greater rate of speed, but I think Howard said it was a fly through there. So if you can get them off of 235 quicker, and the concept plan allows them to shoot straight in, there's no obstructions. So getting on and off 235 is great. They're closing driveway, that's gonna diminish the value of their property. And there's nothing in the county ordinance, when you talk about in lieu of fees or mitigation, there's nothing in the county ordinance that gives them any benefit or credit for closing those driveways. And that's a shame, because it's gonna devalue their properties down the road.
Your time's, your time's almost up, Mr. Aldridge.
I live in the community, I work in the community. I hear what the neighborhood is saying, and I appreciate what they say, because I live in Town Creek. So when you think about test drives and consumer behavior, I don't think the neighborhood's a good route to go. But having that I live in Town Creek, they put in speed bumps. They put up signs, public, you know, neighborhood only. Then they put in speed bumps, two on Woodlawn and two on Spruce. Concerned about people flying through the neighborhood, not just the car drives, everybody else. Maybe the state and county could look at putting speed bumps on Oak Drive and Old Pine Road. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Aldridge? Thank you, sir. Did I get a chance to swear you in, Mr. Fight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Rory Fight, 23176 Woodland Acres Road is where my business is. And the proposal they put up is, is nice because you do have the right in, the right out, but they need to make it so that we have an entrance for our property as well. I've talked to them, I think we're gonna be able to work something out, but it's, if you look at everything else on 235, there's service roads on everywhere. And the county, when they talked about this, said there will be service roads for the properties behind. That property that we have is not only my little office that you all know about, the house next to it, which is closest to this dealership, and then the house behind it is commercial, as well as Route 4, is all under this new commercial zoning. So those properties contiguous would be roughly five acres. So when we do sell it, if we do, then it would be commercial with no telling how many people would be there. So you have to consider the, the traffic pattern going through the neighborhood, that just won't work. The people can't take that. We have a little business and we go through there. So we have to come up with some sort of service road in order to make this project work. And also, I don't know if they can put a deceleration lane or not, we'll discuss that as well, but the traffic is booking through there. They're going so fast, there's accidents all the time. All, today there was accidents. So if it's raining, there's accidents. And everybody's trying to make it home from work, and that's the busiest corner in the county. So we have to come up with something to make it so that people don't go through the neighborhood to get to the offices that we'll have, or whatever's there, and also they don't go through the neighborhood for their test drive. That's all I got to say.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Fight?
Could you tell me where your office is again? It's on the corner of Route 4 and 235, it's a construction business there. Fight Contracting. So, I mean, that, that busy, that corner's so busy, it's crazy. So we have to come up with something that makes it so people can get off the road. What we've learned is trying to come into the entrance that we have off of 235 is, is a gamble. I mean, you have to really think about it, because if there's somebody behind you that doesn't see you, you're gonna be in big trouble there. So it, same thing, just a couple doors down, or just one door down. It's, those people are worried about getting home to their family, and they're booking. So we need to do something to make it so that there's some safety there.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Fight. Do I have a chance to swear you in, Mr. Hill? Could you, why don't you pick the microphone up because you're tall and speak to the police.
My only question concern is.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Yeah, Benjamin Hill. And I have a rental in the Woodland Acres Community, 23201 Potter Drive. My only concern, and this is directed to Pat Mudd, our last meeting, a question was asked to him regarding stormwater management. The question was somewhat to the effect of, what if your stormwater drainage does not pass? And his answer was, maybe Hyatt will ask the property owner behind the proposed concept plan for permission to amend whatever drainage needs to be done. So I would like more details surrounding that, because I am the property owner.
Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Hill, before you go? We'll be, Mr. Longmore will be answering that question as we go forward. Okay, that's all I have on my sign-in list, was there anybody else? Mrs. Cowan, you are on the list, but I didn't see a yes, though. I should've known to call.
I apologize.
That's all right, dear, you.
Fill everything else out.
That's all right.
It's right, yes.
Now you know I'm gonna let you come up here, Ms. Cowan, so you don't have any problem with that. Give us your name and address, please, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Joan Sullivan Cowan and live at 2141 South Essex. Evening, I am here to speak in favor of approving the concept plan design for the, thank you, John, for the Kia, and, and the Honda and Kia dealerships. There are many facts and questions to consider. One, for us, this business is not on farmland. Two, the proposed site can have both water and sewer hookups. Three, the dealerships will impact traffic in the neighborhood. Have speed bumps been considered on Oak and Old Pine? Four, has something else been considered besides the dealership helping to pay for a stoplight on the north end of FDR and 235? Has a park been considered? ZIP Code 263, 206, try again, 20653 Lexington Park has two parks. ZIP Code 20634 Great Mills has a park and a senior citizen center. Is there any park in ZIP Code 20619 California where these dealerships plan to build? Five, then it needs to be considered that these dealerships will provide good paying jobs that are not on the naval base. Six, our county needs to increase the tax base. The Maryland Blueprint for Education requires our county to provide more funds for public education. To start doing this, the county income tax has been raised from 3.0 to 3.2 percent. Now, how many county residents have driven out of the county to purchase a vehicle and help increase the tax base for Charles and Calvert? Having these dealerships will increase our county's tax base. In conclusion, would it not be best to approve this concept plan design, but also do something for the adjoining neighborhood? Thank you for your time.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Cowan? As always, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Cowan, did you have anything you want to say? There you go.
Let, let the boss say it all.
I wasn't gonna say that, but. Okay, was there anybody else? That's the end of the sign-in sheet.
What's the question?
That's it, no, you, you come on up. Did I have a, did you get sworn in?
Yes, sir, I didn't.
All right, well then we'll do that. You raise your right hand, do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Sir.
Can you give us your name and address? Step up to that microphone, or take it out and, and hold on, there you go.
Name's Michelle Armsworthy, I live at 23302 Christie Court in California, Maryland, in Woodland Acres. I do have one question of something that was brought up. If the dealership allows the construction company access to their property to get on 235, are they gonna close the end of Woodland Acres Drive so nobody can cut through the dealership to the construction company into our neighborhood?
I'll get the applicant to, to answer that. I'll get the applicant to answer that for you when we get them back up here, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Longmore, did you hear that question? Anybody else? Go ahead, come up. Okay, did I get a chance to swear you in? Okay. Do you declare and affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony, responses, and statements you may give will be the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Okay.
My name is Laura Appleby, I live at 23189 Old Pine Court, California, Maryland, Woodland Acres. Still confused about the fact that there is no turn lane into this business. It's gonna be the same turn lane, if I'm understanding this correctly, as every morning that, everyone that's going to turn on to Route 4. I, I don't see how this is gonna be helpful. I can be out in my front yard and hear squealing brakes all the time, traffic with people trying to get into the businesses that are there now. And now with the car wash going in, and our light at our intersection is already horrible. When I'm trying to go to work in the mornings, I do not even go when the light turns green at California Boulevard, because there are so many red light runners as it is. It's already a horrible section of traffic, and I just, no, I just don't see it's gonna help. I'm not saying there can't be businesses there, but I just feel like there's gotta be a better way for them to get in and out. If they're using the same turn lane that everyone is using to get onto Route 4, it's, it's just gonna make. it's just gonna make rear ends, rear end accidents happen more often, I feel. But, anyway, thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Does anybody else? Mr. Fight, I don't normally do that, but this is ki, no, this is kinda important, and you're, you're a neighbor, so I'm, I'm gonna catch it for this later, but we'll, we'll go with it.
One of the questions was, would, uh, Woodland Acres Road be cut off to the traffic from my area there where my office is? 'Cause right now, we go, we can come off 235, come through my lot, and go down Woodland Acres Road.
Correct.
And that's not fair to them. What, what they're asking is, are we gonna close it off at the end of the commercial site there, which would be, um, ways down from our office on Woodland Acres Road, but it would stop the traffic for those people who live there?
I'll, I'll get the applicant to answer that for you. Anybody else? Mr. Cowan, you changed your mind. It's alright. Did I get a chance to swear you in, Mr. Cowan?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Troy Cowan, 21411 South Essex, Lexington Park. I'm the old guy from Lexington Park. Just, just an observation for the folks in the room. My wife and I go to a lot of these public forums, public reviews, and thank you very much for having them. A great many of the comments I've heard tonight deal with storm drainage, a problem. Traffic heavy, a problem. Are they the direct result of this project? No. Are they a general county problem? Yes. The, um, public comment forum is tomorrow night at 6:30. I would offer that these kinds of comments would be best imposed there. That's all I got. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Cowan? Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and... I have a question that's gonna be asked that has to do with Department of Public Works Transportation. Is it okay if I let somebody come up and just give a quick statement? Okay, Mr. Aldridge, come on.
Louis Aldridge. I submitted written comments.
Yes, sir.
And there's a discussion about closing off Woodland Acres or service roads. You used interpartial connector. I addressed most of all of that in my written comments. Like to ask whoever, and I think it's Mr. Mills, does the county, state, or anybody else have a plan for this interpartial connector, service road, or whatever else it is? Because, I'm, I'm good friends with Roy. I think Roy, you know, he's got a point. He doesn't wanna be cut off. His driveway's up there. But in the same token, I don't think it's incumbent on the applicant to have to solve everybody's problem on 235. I think they should be, this should be what they put forward, judged on that merit. But if there's a plan I don't know about for a service road, or cable house lane extension, that would help everybody that's here. Because right now, the last information on that that I know of was from 2015. Nine years old, and it wasn't very good, and it cut Roy off. Suppose a drawing or idea chopped him off. So, if somebody can answer everybody, I think-
We'll get that addressed. Okay, is there anybody else? Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public testimony. I'm gonna take a five-minute recess, and then, um, Mr. Longmore and, and Donnie, Mr. Mills, uh, we'll get some questions answered then, if we could. Okay? Five-minute recess. Yes? Cold? Alright. Alright, we're back in session. Thank everybody for all the input that you gave. Mr. Longmore, we got several questions that we need to get some answers for. Were you wr, were you writing, or you need me to give it to you?
Um, I have a lot of notes, but if you have questions, I can, I can answer them.
You go ahead and do yours, and then I'll, if you-
So, some of the, I know some of the initial questions were about stormwater management in the neighborhood. I'm not sure where those photos were from. I don't know if that was shared exactly where they were. I don't know that, that Pat understood the exact location of those. What I think he testified to is that this site will control all the stormwater management coming off of it, um, so that it will not make it any worse than, than what it is now. I think it was Mr. Aldridge said that, that this applicant doesn't have to face all the problems in the neighborhood, but it certainly should not make it worse. And that's what my client is willing to stay, say here, that they're willing to do, and it'll have to be approved by the county, by Public Works, the other, um, organizations that review those. This is the only concept site plan. I know there was some question. Mr. Mudd talked to the neighbor that came up and asked about his property. Certainly, we can't take any property or put a device on a property without working with the property owner. Mr. Mudd talked to him about that and made that clear. Um, I think that, that comment, that was last hearing where it was really hard to communicate. I remember hearing that, and I don't think that's what he meant. What, what I think Pat meant was that, and, and I know the, the commission knows this, but for clarification to the public, is that these plans are not final yet, 'cause we have to go through that final site plan process that Director Andrews talked about that takes many months after this. Um, it simply has not been finalized yet, 'cause that's not our process here. But, our site will have to control all the stormwater management. It will not contribute more to that, um, or it won't be approved. And some of that is on the risk of the developer. Because, and part of it is, we're just not that far along in the process to see if the preliminary plans will work once we get through all that design. But that's their commitment to do that. On some of the traffic concerns that came up and the entrances, I know there are a lot of questions there. There is another entrance just past our site. I don't know if it goes onto the far corner property that the public talked about, or the other ones that are kind of that group of properties that's right on the corner there. There is another access right off of 235. So, to be clear, this development is not cutting off their access to 235 that they already have that's there. You can see that on the site plan. There's another entrance just beyond our property line. My client has said they're willing to work with the other property owners to see if they can make it work. They are willing to do that, but there are considerations, just like the considerations that the public is raising about other things. They'll need to make sure that their safety issues are addressed, that it's not causing other traffic that's not intended on our site. We can't guarantee that they'll be able to work something out, but they're willing to work with the neighbors to see if something can work. So, I want to be clear. They haven't said they're going to allow an access to those other properties. But there is already another entrance off 235. They do have the back entrance off of the neighborhood. That is not something that my client created or can change. That's up to those property owners to decide which way they, which road they use to get off of their properties. I have other comments to address, but if you have questions, I have kind of the summary that I'd like to go through. But I think those are two of the main questions that came up were those, that connection and the storm water management is what I heard kind of a couple of times.
Mr. Longmore, what I'd like to ask is, it's better for the traffic engineer for you.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry. My question is either the traffic engineer or yourself. We've heard a lot of concern about the impact it's going to have on Woodland Acres. Did I say that right? Yes. We also know that 235 is like Speedway, especially at that intersection. We know that it's a failed intersection. So, we also know that putting car dealerships or any other business that's going to have an influx of a lot of people coming off of 235 into there, that that could pose even more danger to the traffic. Where the people in their cars that are behind the person pulling in, the car pulling in. Has anybody looked at an alternative approach to reduce that risk? I mean, we're talking about risks right now.
Yeah.
And you're throwing out how you can mitigate the risks. I'm not sure bumps, I mean, who wants to have more traffic bumps in their backyard? I mean, on the roads. You know, I wouldn't personally, but I mean, the point is, is there any alternatives to reduce the risk of traffic? And the safety hazards that it's presenting? Because you've got to come right off of 235. And then you've got the issue of the Woodland Acres and the impact it might have on them.
Right.
I think it's a great idea that we've got the dealership wanting to come here. I really, I mean, I thought it was very honorable of that man to come in here and say all the things he said. It's good for the county. I get all of that. But I just think we haven't thought through enough this issue. I mean, I've been looking at it for two weeks and I can't.
Right.
I don't know how much...
I mean, yeah, and certainly Mr. Lenhart can speak. What he shared with me, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that there is really no other fixes that can be made to that intersection. So, if, other than an entire redesign that will never happen, or won't happen anytime soon.
But don't you have enough property in the back to push it back so you'd have more, you could take up? Like to put a, to put a extra road in there to, you know, the runoff?
There would, yeah, Mike, I don't know if you want to address it?
Gosh, the turn lane.
I think those come with their own risk as well, Mike. You know, I don't, like, are you saying put another acceleration/deceleration lane off of 235?
Yeah, like we do up in Charlotte Hall.
Yeah. So, I guess first I would reiterate, and again, Mike Lenhart for the record. I would reiterate, State Highway Administration has reviewed this and approved it with the two right-in, right-out access points. And I would just rattle off a few thoughts in response to your question. First of all, I would reiterate what one of the gentlemen testified to, and I apologize, I don't remember his name. That these intersections, these driveways are going to be standard right-in, right-out access points. Commercial entrances designed to state highway standards. They have a much larger radius for the turn-in and the turnout, along with the island. And it allows, not for a high-speed turn, but what you don't want is to have a really tight turn that people have to slow down and nearly stop to make a turn-in. So, people can turn in and out very easily. They're standard. The, as far as someone else I think mentioned, maybe putting in an extra deceleration lane beside the existing auxiliary lane. There's not enough frontage to do that. You wouldn't have enough room to do a deceleration lane, an acceleration lane coming out of it, number one. Number two, that is a very uncommon situation. I can't think, if you go down through, you know, the rest of 235 here, you go through Prince Frederick, you go through Waldorf. They have auxiliary lanes along the through lanes to specifically handle right-turning vehicles in commercial properties. They don't put in deceleration lanes off of deceleration lanes. That creates additional weaving. Now, people, they want to get in and out, they've got to weave two lanes to get in and out of the driveway. It creates a driver expectancy issue. People don't, you know, they don't expect that because it's not common. There's not enough room to do it. The axel/decela lanes, to do that would be much too short. Again, I would reiterate, these are standard, it will be designed and constructed to S H A standards. State Highway has reviewed and approved it. There's good site distance, so when you're coming in and out, you know, you have good site distance. And really, there's, I would say, not that there's nothing else that we can do, it's just that this meets kind of the standards of how these are designed.
I have something to ask. Yeah, I see.
Certainly.
So, once again, referring back to the staffing report that we received prior to the last meeting. We noticed that it states currently that intersection of four and 235 is operating at a D level of service. Right? And that adding the dealerships will then turn it into a level F. Correct? Am I correct?
I think it's an F in the background.
Goes from a D to an F.
No, it's already an F.
It's already an F. So, there are three, I'm sorry to interrupt. Let me clarify, though. There are three scenarios we look at. We look at existing. And then we look at a future condition that includes growth. It includes other background developments that have been approved but not yet built out. And that's called the background condition, and that does not include the site. And then we look at the total where we add the site in. So, if you look at the background, that will occur, that's what's expected. And it's level of service F under background. So, it's going to be level of service F with or without this site.
Okay. Well, then I need someone to help me understand. Well, it says required level of service D, proposed level of service F at Maryland 235 and Maryland 4. And it states down here that the fees proposed by the developer, which would be eighteen thousand five hundred dollars, is 3.7% of the traffic impact to the existing traffic Maryland 235. And the traffic mitigation has been proposed. So, I'm confused in terms of, you're saying now it is actually a level F. So, basically, it's not having any impact. And the state highway is fine with it, being an F, remaining an F. Or businesses, it's not a problem.
Well, it's, it's an F in terms, if you look at the critical lane volume. So, the F, anything over sixteen hundred is an F. And I apologize, I don't have the traffic study right in front of me, but if the, if the background level of service is a critical lane volume of seventeen hundred, that's an F. And if we add eleven or fifteen critical lane movements, and it goes to seventeen, twenty, that's still an F. So, it does increase. We can measure our increase. Even though it's an F to an F, we can calculate what that impact is.
So, as a former educator, it's a really bad F. The worst F. An F is an F. Okay. So, you know, I feel like it's my responsibility, being on this board, to listen to the public and the citizens and the concerns that they have. And I love the idea of the light at FDR. I think that that is a great idea. And certainly contributing to that is a wonderful thing. But I also feel strongly that that needs to happen for this to move forward, in my opinion, just because, you know, as someone stated earlier, there was an accident there this morning. And, you know, we have to, we have to be the voice of the citizens. I mean, we've heard their voices, but, you know, we also have to definitely consider that when we make these types of decisions. And I applaud the dealership. I think they are doing wonderful things and we definitely want them here. I think that's great. We're going to have more jobs. This is great stuff. But this does concern me.
The only thing I would offer, and I understand your position completely, that the mitigation that's been identified is proportionate to the impact that the dealership creates, you know? And that's what mitigation is. You want to have a direct nexus between the project and what you're proposing. And there should be a proportionate response in terms of what's provided.
So, that's the 3.7%?
Yes. And actually, the impact at four and 235 is 1.2 or 1.3%. The 3.7 comes from our impact at four and 235 and our impact at 235 and First Colony Boulevard. So, we took both of those. We looked at them in the morning and evening peak hour. We calculated the worst impact at the morning or evening peak hour. Then we came up with, and I think it was 1.3% impact at four and 235, 2.4% impact at 235 and First Colony. And then we added those together to come up with a 3.7. So, that's how we came up with that. So, the 3.7 isn't four and 235. That's kind of a worst-case look at both of the intersections combined.
Thank you.
Sure.
You know, and for better, for worse, what I've seen in doing this for years, and I know you all see it, to get any of these type improvements seems to me that they have to at least be partially developer-funded. And addressing the impact that they have on it is fair, and that's what the law says they're supposed to do. But we've been talking about FDR Boulevard a lot. That wouldn't be here without a lot of other applicants being in front of you that donated portions of that to get it started. Now, we had some county commissioners that really championed it and put some funds behind it and backed it up. But what really got it started were decisions like this tonight. There's also been the improvements that have occurred at 235 and four. There are businesses that likewise had that as an intersection of concern where they have contributed funds that added the other turn lanes that are there. I know up at Oak Crest, some of their mitigation, some of the funds that got contributed there. I think Wildwood had that as well, where there have been, these funds contributed to build up the fund, so there's a critical amount, both with what the county can budget from the general funds and what have been contributed by the folks that have that mitigation that actually gets those things across the finish line. So, that's what I'm seeing in this case is that, and Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we talked on the phone earlier. That light at FDR and 235, I think Mike eloquently said, that's what'll really make FDR do what it's supposed to do. Like what it's been designed to do since I've been home practicing for the last 24 years. Like it was on the books then. But we've worked so hard for that, that that light is the best and most practical and only realistic way to fix 235 and four, to make it better. You know, it's not going to fix it entirely, but it's going to make it better. It's going to pull some lanes off. So, that's what this client is willing to do. That's what this applicant is willing to do, to give their contribution to that. And all of us hate going through traffic lights and getting stopped at a red light, but it's going to make traffic flow better. And it's going to overall be a positive thing for that traffic there. I drive through there a lot. I drive through there every time I come and appear before you. So, you know, that's often, you know, during rush hour. I drove through there this evening. This will make it better going through there. It'll pull some of the traffic off of that. So, that's really what that mitigation is about. My client's willing to be reasonable with it. The calculations, again, aren't just how it affects that intersection. The 3.7 is a little bit more, but they're willing to do that and support that. And hopefully, if they do it, and even if there's others that do it, that'll build that critical mass to get it done quicker. You know, so we don't have to wait and hope the funding comes from above, from somewhere.
And if it doesn't, I mean, the problem is, those poor people have to wait till the cows come home.
Right.
For, to even be able to start building.
Well, and it depends on, and it depends on how this commission views it on that. And it's up to you all to decide if the amount we're proffering is fair, and we think it is. We think there's a reasonable basis for it. And the agencies have reviewed it, and kind of what the trigger will be for them. I can say historically in the past, the contributions to those improvements have not been tied to them being completed by the time the development's done, because you get a moratorium around an intersection. You know, and then it just doesn't work, and nobody else will do it because they're not, they're like, why would I do what those guys did? So, you lose that opportunity to get some more contributions. That, I think, is the policy reason to consider allowing them to make that mitigation that the agencies have reviewed. They've approved the traffic that's there. And this, you know, the flip side of it, you know, and looking at that on the safety side and on the traffic side, is that, I've said it a couple of times tonight, but the county had the opportunity to say, this area should not be developed. We're worried about it. We're not going to develop it. We're going to zone it a lower zone. They upzoned it during the Lexington Park Development District. I mean, I heard one of the neighbors come up and say, isn't it just supposed to be restaurants there? While he was talking, I looked at the zoning ordinance, and it's not just restaurants in that zone that can be there. And there used to be a lower zone on that side of 235. Just some of the allowable uses, convenience stores, financial institutions, hotels, restaurants, retail sales, taverns. All of those are allowed in that zone. And that's why when I sat down and talked to these folks, I liked the company a lot. I mean, you can see it when they described the business they have. But when you think of the other uses that could go there, I think this is a much safer use, a less intense use than a lot of those other ones that could be allowed there on those four different lots. And you have them willing to contribute to the light up there. I think all that should be considered together. Because it's just a good, instead of having four separate businesses, you've got one that can be controlled. You see them willing to put the conditions not to go through the neighborhood on their test drives. I mean, sure, can you stop every, could they stop it entirely? You heard them be honest about it. We know they can't do it, but they're going to train it, and they're going to be available to the public if somebody sees it being violated. That's just like our laws, like people speeding down the road. You can get, if you get caught, you have a penalty. They're willing to put that on their employees. To those are, you know, I know I'm shying a little bit away from your, but that's, I think, all of that, looking at it together. If the idea was, we were going to shut down these properties and... these properties and not allow people to develop them, it should not have been rezoned five years ago to this zoning category. Because otherwise, my client would have never entered in the contract to buy it. And that came directly from this county, that it was going to be an allowable use So that's, I mean, I have a couple of other things to go over, but we're happy to answer any other questions if if you all haven't.
I think Ms. Armworthy had a question that during the construction will be a cut through, and how you would possibly prevent that.
I think, and I can have my client confirm it, they're willing not to have a cut through off of the site out of the back during construction in any way. Yeah, they're, they're willing to guarantee there'll be no access out of the back of the site down into the neighborhood during construction. So that hopefully is a non-issue if you need to put a condition on it to say that. So the the, it'll come in and off of two thirty-five, not going out the back. There's not designed to be a road going through the neighborhood anyway, but they're not.
But she's expressed the concern, just wanted you to make sure we addressed it.
Right, right. So that would not.
Sure, that was the question.
That was not my question.
Okay, I might not understood her question then. What was the question? Or can somebody summarize it, or?
I wrote down, she wanted to know about.
During construction?
Construction company entryways.
I believe that'll be off of two thirty-five, because that's the only access to the site, so.
Well, I need a little bit more than a believe. I need.
Well, no, that would.
Two thirty-five.
Construction entrances will be off of two thirty-five only. Yeah, it'll be only off of two thirty-five. There will not be any other access for construction vehicles on or off the site during construction.
Okay. Well, we can, we can put that down as a condition, that all construction entry is to come off of two thirty-five. I can't open it back up, folks. Alls I can do is make sure.
That's my understanding of required, and.
That was not my question.
All right, Ms. Armworthy, come up, but just, just ask the question, okay? Don't, don't.
My question was.
Into, into the microphone.
My question was, if the dealership allows the construction company, Freight Construction or Fight Construction Company, access to come off of, into their property to get onto two thirty-five, are they going to close Woodland Acres off at the construction company's property? So they can't come in through the dealership and over.
Okay. I had that down as a question from Mr. Mills.
Yes, that was my question.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry for misunderstanding.
No, I had that, that was a.
I thought it had to do with.
The construction company, not the construction of the dealership.
Okay.
But that's easy to.
Yeah. And I think when I started speaking, one of the comments, and maybe I wasn't clear, that company has their own entrance off of two thirty-five already. My client's not guaranteeing that they're going to have access through their site, but they're willing to talk to them about it to see if there's some reasonable accommodation that can be made. They can't control what.
I was going to say, your applicant can't control Woodland.
Or whether a road can be shut down. So I don't think that that's anything my client can address one way.
Or vice versa. Woodland can come through there too.
But if there's no access, they're not guaranteed to have an, they don't know if it's going to be able to work out, to have an access to the neighboring property on the other side. We are not landlocking them. They already got an entrance off of two thirty-five. If we can work something out that's reasonable, that'll be safe, that can be approved, all of those things, my client's willing to look at it. But they can't control that. And if the county says it's not safe because too much traffic will go there. Right now, there's already an entrance off of two thirty-five into the construction site, and it can already go back there. So I don't think this is adding anything to it, one way or another.
Anything else you want to answer?
I mean, just a couple of other things to touch upon. And, you know, the, we've talked about a lot of these, but a couple of points that have kind of jotted down as as we've gone. You know, again, it's allowed in in the area. We think this is a good use compared to the other uses that could be there. It's a great company. I grew up with family companies selling cars here in the county. Seems like a lot of those folks aren't doing it anymore. It's nice to see another one come in. You know, they are working with their neighbors. You heard that they're working with Mr. Guy to to work on his site. All of those things that I know that this commission and the Board of Appeals, like this commission, likes to see people reaching out to their neighbors and talking to them. My clients haven't been shy in doing that in any way. You know, if you don't have these type of projects that contribute to the light that we've talked about, it means that when that's done, it's all of us paying for it through taxes instead of the developer doing it that's going to contribute to it. So they're, they're willing to pay their fair share. You know, to say no based on that will shut down this whole area, which I think could open up a lot of issues if there's not some way for the development to occur in the development district in an area that's owned this way, when there is a mitigation that that is there. It will allow car dealership, a new variety in our county. There was some in some of the public comments, I know in the written comments, that folks won't have to drive to Waldorf or Annapolis or or up the road for this. I think it's something that, I think that's good for the county. And we have a business that wants to invest here, have the jobs that we've heard about, that's a good family-run business, that has a track record of doing this, they're not a fly-by-night company. I think you heard from the the manager that spoke about sincerely the type of person he is, they want to invest in the community and be good citizens. I think we we want those type of folks here. And, you know, FDR and fit, you know, kind of completing that really, in the way that I look at it on this end of it, has been in the works for so long. FDR was designed, you heard how the trucks can get in and out, it's working. Like, it's, it might not feel like it, because we've got more people here than we had fifty years ago, or twenty years ago, or ten years ago. But it is working, it is pulling some of the traffic off, and this will make it work even better. And I, I mean, I guess the last thing I'll mention then certainly, is that the the staff report is very thorough. I know it's a newer type of staff report than what the planning commission has seen in the past and what I've seen in the past. They, the staff are the ones that review these all the time. There's a lot of work that goes into these applications before they get to you. And the staff report did say, based on their thorough review of the application, that the development appears to meet the requirements set forth in the ordinance. It has all the agency comments that are there. I won't bore you with the list that I wrote down, I think there's seven, every agency has signed off saying either they approve it or that they have no objection to it for concept site plan approval that's there that goes toward the APF standards. It has to be consistent with a comprehensive plan. It's in the right zoning category, it's in the development district, it's where this type of use is proposed to be. You know, it has all the open space requirements, all the sidewalk requirements that it has for the amenities that are required for this type of development. In the staff report and in our PowerPoint that's there are all the elevations that I know you all saw before tonight. It meets all the design features of it. Staff report did a very nice job of running through each element of the divine, design features and why this project meets that. This is a project where my client has put a lot of work into it. They want to come into this county and invest here. And this is really the type of use we should put there if we're going to zone it that high. So we just asked that you consider that. And they're willing to accept the reasonable conditions we've talked about tonight. And they just like to be part of our community and build their business here and contribute to our community. So we're happy to answer any other questions, but that's where we're at tonight.
Anybody have any questions? Just to get everything correct, interparcel connectors we're going to work with on both sides.
They're, they're willing to investigate it, but they, they want to make sure that it's safe and that it's reasonable and it doesn't contribute to other problems that we've heard about tonight. But they're willing to talk to their neighbors about it and and try to work through those issues.
I know there were some questions about stormwater management and such. Y'all have, y'all have done your, your due diligence on that. A lot of that can be addressed at the, as Mr. Cowan said, at the public forum tomorrow night. Thank you, Mr. Cowan, for that. And that's the way you get the ball rolling on that. Department of Public Works, you know, if you, if you want signs in your neighborhood, if you want speed bumps, or I would rather call them speed humps, in your neighborhood, you have to start a petition in order to get those types of things, you know? That can be addressed. I grew up a lot in that neighborhood back there. I lived with Harrisons for for a pretty good while. I'm familiar with that neighborhood, it's small street, so I mean, it, and it's a neighborhood, it is a true neighborhood back there. So the condition of, and and the applicant also saying that they won't have any, they won't let their, you know, as they said, they can't police people, but they can surely, you know, make sure. And they've also offered that they would give a number to the neighborhood in the rear if there's a problem, they can call them, they can take care of it. You know, they, they seem to care a lot about taking care of that neighborhood behind them, which shows being a good neighbor is being a good neighbor, so. I think you've directed, you've taken care of all my questions, I believe. Does anybody else have anything? All right, you can, you can go back and take a deep breath. And I'll, I'll open it to the board for deliberations. As a matter of fact, I just did a lot of mine. But I, I think they've, they've pretty well answered a lot of my questions. I, I do, I feel bad about the stormwater. I mean, we, we heard a lot about that when Park Place was before us and and about the problems they're having, and they had some things that got switched around in there. So hopefully, it'll take care of some of that stormwater management. But that's an ongoing problem that's, that's right now. It's, it, you know, they haven't even moved in the neighborhood, and it's going to take a couple of years for them to get in there. As I say, I've been over there, they, they're going to, my questions were answered about out front on two thirty-five. Anybody else have anything? Do you want me to hit you one at a time? I can do that. I'll just, Mr. Brown, Mr. Mike Brown, do you have any?
I'll just say, this reminds me of talking about the addition to the Bean Building. We were concerned about the traffic. But I'm reading the conclusion that the county and the state highway have approved, they meet their requirements. What can, we don't make sense, but it seems like we don't have legs because it has been approved. And this is the same thing that happened at the Bean Building. Both the county and the state has approved this plan.
That's the problem.
And since I'm the one who brought up that comment about how the state kind of does its thing, I think, Mr. Cowan, to the public out there that's deeply concerned, both the stormwater and the safety, I would tell you to lobby the commissioners at their open meetings. I would say that when I came on this board last year, there was an issue of some cutoffs down in the Great Mills Project. And believe me, by their going to the board, they got almost immediate action. And it really did impact. So don't, don't disregard what the chairman has said or Mr. Cowan's saying. But at the same time, I see where the developer is doing everything they can to live within the county and state requirements.
Let's tell. Let's tell, hey, you have anything?
Yeah. So we, we came here tonight to look at a concept plan. They have a lot more hoops to jump through than just tonight. You know, we're just, this is just the tip of the iceberg for them. Somewhere along the line, we've gotten down in the weeds, talking about the intersection of two thirty-five and four. We, we don't have any solution for that, and it doesn't like, seem like the state does either. San Diego County always has to settle. We have to settle for intersections F and D's, and next thing you know, they'll probably have a G and H, I don't know. I think that the Kia dealership does bring some good competition. Every time I go to buy a new car, I have to go to Fredericksburg, get a good price. So that's probably a good thing. I think that you are offering a lot of camaraderie for the community that you've, that you've adopted as your home now. I think that it sounds like that you've been trying to work things out. I know that's not what the community wants to hear, but our hands are tied. We, when they, like Mr. Brown said, when someone comes before us and meets it, we really can't deny it. And it seems like they have met, met everything that is down in the, in our papers that we have to check the boxes with. It will bring some good jobs to the county. And, John, I don't remember your last name, but you're going to provide them with your telephone number? I'm a nurse, I was on call, that you may want to rethink that, because you'll get called thousands of times. Only heartburn that I really have is that the intersection, that the traffic light, the proposed mitigation, I think we really do need to make that as a condition. Because if we don't, Mr. Longmore's hair will be turned brown, like I knew him when he was younger, because you've already waited twenty-four years to see some change. And I don't, I think, in order to hope people speak to the fire, we do have to put that that condition on it when we, when we vote. But other than that, I'll be quiet.
Mr. St. Clair?
Traffic's always been an issue with me, as we saw with the Bean Building. But the state has complete control over us, this board right here. I mean, they, when that, they say it's approved, it's approved. I mean, we need to put the pressure on county commissioners, that's why they have us here. We're a lightning rod for the county commissioners, period. And we need to put pressure on them, number one, stormwater management. That's not the dealership's fault. It's, it's into the neighborhood, they're flooding now. We need to have relief for them for the flooding that's going on there now. And the dealership, if you read the code, there is zero runoff of that piece of property. It's going to be contained and then re-filtered again. That's your new stormwater management that's in play now. So we need to try to get some relief for the people in that neighborhood that's flooded every time you get a two-inch rain, a three-inch rain, a four-inch rain. The, the pictures are very telling, but I don't think the dealership is the one that's going to be contributing more to it. The new rules state zero runoff comes off of that property, and it cannot damage anything that's around you. Just remember that neighborhood is that, that is the new law that's in effect so far as your stormwater management is concerned. Getting to the traffic, we can buy parks, we can buy all kinds of stuff, and it befuddles me that we can't forward fund a traffic light that will take the pressure off of two thirty-five, which makes it more convenient for people to come to this great community and drop a few bucks in it. That, to me, as a businessman, is that I'll make it easier for you to get here, it opens up the traffic, and it helps the dealership, and we're not doing a darn thing about it. We're waiting for the developer? Yes. We did that at Airport View Drive. Each of those people in that industrial park, for which I am one, had to contribute to the stoplight that was there. And that's a lot of businesses that's inside the industrial park. So the funding should be, or should have been already delegated to a fund strictly for the help that intersection that's there. And one of them is to deal with that, that light. And therefore makes FDR Boulevard viable, workable, and do what it was originally supposed to do. I mean, it's like putting three wheels on a wagon, you left the fourth one oil, you're still not going anywhere. So that light would contribute, and it would help the traffic that's in, that's going to be coming that way. My other point is, is that this dealership is now taking away how many other entrances and exits off of the other four sites. There could have had a restaurant, it could have been a lot of other things with a lot more traffic impact. So actually, they have lessened the possibility of an accident there by taking away the extra ins and outs and only putting the one built upon state standard. And I. And I disagree with the putting a secondary de-acceleration lane, even though I'm one of the ones that likes the acceleration lane. For a young man like myself to jump two more lanes to get into one, to get over to the other side of the light, that's not going to happen. Even though I do drive a big black dually out there, as they called me in the last one out there. I also pull a 40-foot farm trailer that holds hay, lumber, and everything else with it. I can't do that with electric vehicles. So they're going to get me off on that subject. Anyway. But I can come pull you out if you get stuck somewhere. Okay? So anyway, I, I think that the dealership has looked at this. They have done their best to take away those extra entrances and exits, which could cause additional stuff. I, I cannot penalize them for the inability of the state of Maryland to at least come down here. They don't even talk to us down here anymore. They just send down mandates and say, this is what you're going to have. This is what you're going to get. But we also need to put pressure on the county commissioners to get funding for that light. We can find it for everything else. We should be able to find it for that light. So I'm kind of opposed to putting that stipulation in there that that light's got to be in there before this dealership can open. We did the same thing with the, the food marketplace there on Route 4. And they opened before they even put their acceleration lanes and everything in. That was a mess. So I think that the dealership should not be penalized. I think that the neighborhood deserves answers from the county commissioners. And I think you should go to that public hearing tomorrow and ask them the same questions that you're asking this board, that we don't have the authority, but the county commissioners do. Okay? We got handed a set of rules and regulations that we have to adhere to. Even though I complained about the state of Maryland, I swore to uphold the rules and regulations as they were handed to us here. I, I yield my time to somebody else.
I spoke my piece and like still.
I agree with Mr. St. Clair. I, I don't think it's fair to hijack the dealership based on whether or not a light gets put in. That's, that's just not fair. So I do hope that those of you that are passionate about this show up tomorrow night and say your piece. And just as my fellow commissioners have stated, when all the boxes are checked, there's not, not much we can do. But we hear you. We appreciate you, all of you. And that's all I have.
Okay. Everybody's had their say. We're pretty much consistent across the board, how, how we feel, I think. There's some, if, if we to move forward with them. Okay, in this project, we have a few conditions that we have. We have some that were in the, I won't say our standard, but there are some conditions that were within the staff report that we need to use. And then we also have the ones about no neighborhood traffic to prevent, you know, and that's up to the dealership to, to uphold, to do that. And then they've kindly given, going to be giving their phone numbers up in order to take care of that. I don't know that we have to put a fee in lieu, a condition for the fee in lieu because it's already, it's already in there. I'll ask Mr. Hauser about that, see if it is. And then also, they've also spoken that they're going to work with the neighbors about their interparcell connectors.
I'd say put the fee in lieu provision in there.
Okay.
That's something you can do right now. The other conditions I had, just the laundry list I had going through today. Loading onsite only for the offloading and unloading cars to make sure that nothing would be in the turn lane there on 235. Was that something? Okay. That no test drives to go onto the nearby neighborhood as well. We can either just do that in general. We know what roads they are, or specify which roads those are. Planning Commission can do it. That would be Potter Drive, Oak Drive, Woodland Acres Road, and Old Pine Court. And for the benefit of the public, I'll state too, that we can take the dealer at their word on that. But a violation of that condition, if it's passed, does become an enforceable action for the county as well. I don't know how much comfort it will bring anyone, but maximum fine of $1,000 could be assessed by a court anytime a test drive wanders in there. It shouldn't be there, and you can report those to the county. And I think that was the list of things that came up before we closed public hearing.
Okay. Does everybody understand that? Any other questions? The, the FDR 235.
That's the other one that we've talked about, the stuff talked about right now. And I sense it, broad agreement from the board, I sense to, well, that we included the mitigation, that the mitigation would be 18,000 and a half towards the, that construction of the intersection improvements at 235 and FDR. I think there's still an open question about how a majority of the board feels about making that concurrent from what it sounds like from deliberation. So that's something the board has to decide.
Well, it's really, I think it has a lot to do with what the state and what the county wants to do. I don't think this board has, this is my opinion, the, the right to, to say, well, you got to have that light in before you build. Because if the state says that they're going to take their time, or if the county says they're going to take their time, I think the county would step up a lot quicker than the state would. But the state sometimes drags on those things, and I'm just being, I'm trying to be as straight-faced as I can. But I think that they know this corridor is very important as to how county grows. So they have been good to us up at Oak Crest, Airport View. Of course, the developers all had to kick in, which this one is also. So I think, I don't think it should be, I don't think it should be a condition. My, my opinion, I don't think it has to be a condition. I think they know this thing has to move along. I know Mr. Mills's department thoroughly know that they'd like to do it. I mean, they've been working on FDR like,
Forever.
Like Ms. Delahay said, since Chris's hair was dark. And, and, and I know he'd like, like to see that. So I'm not being funny, but I mean, it's, it's been that long. It's been that long, huh, Mr. Longmore? But no, it, it, it's been a long time. And I know that they, they try it every, every turn of the road to get that, get everything funded and put in on FDR Boulevard.
And I concur with you, Mr. Chairman, and that's why I asked the question earlier. Once they donate to the developer, will the money be fenced? And that's why I was asking the question. So I concur.
Anybody else have an opinion?
I just think that's what I said earlier. You could, he'd be waiting till the cows come home. Had to wait for the state.
But pressure on the commissioners goes a long way.
That's what it takes. It's, okay. Everybody understand everything is, I think we were ready to make a decision. So does somebody want to make a motion, and if they do, to include the, include the conditions that we've, that we've come up with, and then if we have to add one after, after the motion, we'll, we'll do so. Hang, hang close though, Mr. Hauser.
There's some language that's got to be added in here.
Well, I just, I want to, if we're going to do it, I want it, want it done right.
Give us your list.
I don't want any problems.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Delahay.
In the matter of concept site plan number CSP 23-0265, excuse me, Honda and Kia dealership, having accepted the staff report and having made a finding that the criteria of Section 60.6 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance have been met, and noting that the reference project has met all requirements for concept approval, I move that the concept site plan be approved with the following conditions. A, any road improvements required by the state and county must be concurrent with the issue of the certified, of the certificate of occupancy. A variance to reduce the 30-foot Type C buffer yard required along the southwestern boundary adjacent to parcel 286 must be obtained from the Board of Appeals. C, one handicap parking space shall be added near Honda building. And D, all the stuff that Mr., Mr. Hauser had listed. Do you have that list, sir?
Got it. So I think first, we'll read with the one most pressing, that $18,500 will be allocated towards mitigation for traffic improvements as discussed tonight at the intersection of MD 235 and FDR Boulevard.
That'll be D.
To D.
That'll be D.
That would be D. Then condition E would be that, I can think of a more artful way to put this, that any offloading or unloading of cars in bulk shall occur onsite, not to be done on Maryland Route 235.
Let's see.
Now F.
That the user shall not allow any test drives onto any of the following roads. Give me one moment. Map ready. To Oak Drive, Woodlands Acres Road, Potter Drive, Old Pine Court, or any other road or public right-of-way in Woodland Acres or Woodland Heights.
That was F.
That's it. And I'll just, when I say that, I've always looked to Mr. Longmore. Is there anything too in artful or unworkable in the language on those conditions? Okay.
Okay. I've got a motion.
I'll second.
And I have a second by Mr. John Brown. Okay, we can do roll call vote. Ms. Robrecht?
Aye.
Ms. Summers?
Aye.
Mr. Brown? Mike Brown?
Aye.
John Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Delahay?
Aye.
Ms. St., Mr. St. Clair. Mr. St. Clair.
You've talked to my wife.
Mr. St. Clair.
Aye.
Also, but I, y'all have got some very good neighbors, understanding. Make sure you take care, good care of them. They'll, them might come over and buy a car from you. Okay? We appreciate everybody. Every, everything that y'all added tonight helped us to make this decision. The things that we can fix for you that were bought up, you've, I'm not going to beat it down for you. Go to these public forums. Make yourself heard. Write letters. It, it ma, it makes a big difference.
Mr. Chairman, the, the photographs that y'all gave us tonight, I have a set that you want to take to the county commissioners' meeting tomorrow. Make copies. Tell them what's going on because that's a county issue. Okay?
Okay. 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 Thank you all. Is there any other business for the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Made a motion. Everything's accepted. And we're adjourned. Thank you, folks.